I call the meeting of the three nights of the first night's board of the station to order. Mr. Gaines, do you call the roll?
Mr. Cobal, here.
Ms. Pepler? Here.
Mr. Register?
Here.
Mr. Silverman?
Here.
Mr. Zucker?
Here.
Okay. We have three items on business services. Shall we take them one at a time? See? Okay. I will accept a motion to approve the recommendation that was issued on September 17th, the award contract for the school bus relocation on May 22nd Road project.
Send it.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Go ahead.
Do we have a site plan of how this is going to look like? And it's not in here. Do we get one?
We do. We did not bring one with us.
Can I have one?
You may.
Okay. And then if I'm reading this correctly, that we had budget 450,000, contracts coming in 338 to the contingency. So theoretically, if we come up sevens, we're going to come in either between 80,000 to 120,000.
Yeah. Well, it didn't quite work out that way.
Actually, the engineer's estimate was 450,000.
Okay.
The actual budget was 316,000.
Oh, okay.
So it didn't work out quite as well as we...
Shade over.
Yeah, just a shade over.
So I shouldn't pay it? Then the engineering budget really isn't... The engineering estimate isn't the same as what we had budgeted?
No.
Correct?
Yeah, frequently it is not.
Gotcha. Okay.
Is this for rent as well?
No. This is just for the capital.
So we'll be talking about rent at a later date?
We did the agreement, the lease agreement, with Park Synagogue for the rent.
Okay. So this is just the mechanics and cosmetic.
This is just the physical changes to the space to accommodate the buses.
This is the bricks and sticks of it.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Gaines?
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Okay. I'll accept a motion for B2 recommendation to select a construction manager at risk for the enabling project.
So moved. Second.
Any comments, Mr. Shigalis?
I do not. I'm happy to answer questions.
For the sake of the audience, this... Well, when we... What are we defining enabling projects as?
Well, this is primarily... This is the work to modify the Wiley building and campus to accommodate the high school students next year. So that is... And this is the company that will actually do the work. And we're modeling the same process that we used for the stadium and the same process we are currently using for the high school, the new high school design, where we are using the project procurement method called construction manager at risk. And so we went through our normal... Not our normal, but the selection process that we have done previously to identify that firm. And I would ask Pat O'Brien, who was the lead in that process, if you want to know more about that process and the details behind it.
That would be fine.
Yeah, okay. We started with an RFQ. August 15th was issued. We had four firms respond to that RFQ. We interviewed all four firms, and we also asked them to provide costs associated with their general conditions, fees, and contingencies based on the evaluation of the best value in conjunction of their qualifications, their fee proposals, and the interview feedback. The folks at Gilbain were rated, the top-rated best value combining those factors in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, Section 9.33 through 9.335, and the Ohio Administrative Code, Section 153, process for selecting a construction manager at risk.
When you sent out requests for bids for something like this, what did they receive? Are you giving them PORs? What are they getting?
What they get for this particular project was we issued a site plan for the Wiley project, a description of the Wiley project. The Delisle auto body was included in part of the work that they're going to manage, so a description of that. We had a walkthrough at the building so they could look at Wiley and ask questions, discuss. We issued a copy of the modular drawings, even though we're procuring that separately. That is something that they're going to be involved in in terms of managing. So we also issued a set of the progress prints that we have for the civil work on the Wiley site. So all the information that we have available, that they will be working with us to coordinate and manage, that was made available to the potential folks that would be interested in responding to our RFQ.
Thank you.
Is there a requirement that the construction manager at risk for the enabling project be different from the construction manager at risk for the other projects? Because isn't there... Aren't there requirements that you can't have the same construction?
Well, that's why we went through a process. I mean, it's a public advertised process. There's not a conflict of interest between one firm or another firm. They were evaluated completely and totally independently.
Great.
Okay. Mr. Gaines?
Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Okay. For item B3, I'll accept a motion to approve the September 24th bid and order contract for the Wiley Campus Modular Unit project. So moved.
Second.
Any questions, discussions?
So this is the first step in moving forward with the work at the Wiley campus. And these are the modular units that we will be placing at the site. We moved ahead to do a competitive bid for this portion of the work, and then, once we award this contract, this work will be assigned to the CMR whom we just hired, and they will then coordinate it going forward. So that's what this action is tonight.
Talk us through why you're recommending the lease as opposed to the purchase?
Sure. There are... We asked for a price to both lease and to buy. There are advantages to both. The chief advantage, and part of it is market conditions, but the chief advantage that we're recommending the lease for is we save $700,000. It's $3.6 million versus $4.3 million to buy. One of the advantages of leasing is four years from now, when we're finished with the middle school project, the lease is up, the modulators go away. The other thing is if we continue with the master plan that involves additional need for swing space on the property, we can extend the lease. So those are advantages to leasing. The disadvantage to leasing is if we have a master plan that suggests we would want to continue to have swing space on the property, we only had a lease, we didn't buy them. Now, the disadvantage on the buying side, if we were to go to the buy selection, it's great that we own the modulators, they would be there. Problem is, is then they would still be there. Of course, it's certainly an additional cost. The challenge is, at some point, we're not going to want modulators on the property. And when you go to sell them, one, we're not in that business; two, they're custom modulators, they're made for our specific uses. Because of the width of what we need and the size of the classrooms and other classrooms, it's not common for someone to want to buy the configuration that we're going to have at the end of the project. The other problem you have is when you go to sell modulators, we'll have school that will go through June. Takes time for the company that whoever's going to disassemble them and then sell them and then reassemble them, it's very difficult to do from a June to August period. So what happens is even if you own them and you say, "I want to find someone that's going to buy them," you end up having them typically, it's hard to get them disassembled and out of there that same summer. So now they're going to sit there vacant. Even if we have somebody that might be interested in buying them, we're going to still have to, you know, we have to heat them and cool them because you can't let anything adverse grow in your modulators. And so if you own them, there is the potential, you can recover some of your capital cost, but it's a difficult market. You know, in fact, when we were looking at potentially buying, we had a lot of questions from modular companies that said, "Boy, would you consider a used one?" Our architects' experience has been anytime they've looked at a used modular, the quality is a significant drop-off. And even though we're going to use them for a period of four years and we're going to maintain them, it's not the same as a brand-new unit. So the resale market is a challenging market, and it's speculative to how much you could really recover. So that's a disadvantage to buying. On top of the fact that if we buy, it's a $4.3 million cost, our budget for this was $4 million. So there's lease advantages, gives us, you know, the flexibility we need for this component of the master plan.
But the bids for the lease were for new units?
Correct.
That were leasing?
Correct.
And what is the going rate for the secondary market for these purchase units if we were to go and resell them? I, you know, I do remember an earlier conversation where we were leaning toward purchasing because we said there was a market, a secondary market.
There is. It's difficult to imagine what that's going to be four years from now. We asked a number of the manufacturers, not the manufacturers, but the vendors who sell them to us, you know, "What's your experience? What do you think we would be able to get?" We get a range of answers from, you know, 10% of the value to, you know... They don't want to give you a firm number. They won't commit to anything. And it's... So nobody would commit to giving us any number. We made a couple of phone calls to districts. We know they're going to be looking to do the same thing we are, i.e., sell them, and haven't gotten any feedback on someone who's been successful on the scale that we have, typically when people are looking to buy. Go ahead, Steve.
Well, I think, and we did talk about this quite...
We did.
Quite a bit of detail. And the more we dug into it, the more I became convinced that not only do I not think that there's a whole lot of value in a secondary market or that we could sell them for much, I'm concerned that it would actually become a burden for us. And we would not have any way to get rid of those modular units. And, you know, it would take an enormous amount of time, and they would just be in our way, and a cost to continue to maintain them, as Pat has indicated. I just think that risk, the more we dug into this, the more we realized, I did certainly, that there's a lot of risk there to trying to sell those afterwards. And I... It would be my recommendation that that's not a risk that it's worth us taking.
And we have data on that? The majority of districts are leasing, not purchasing?
I think it's... It's mostly based on conversations we had with other districts who were trying to sell the modules that they own, as well as conversations with the leasing companies themselves. Yeah. So...
Is it safe to say then that the residual value at four years would be well below 50% of the purchase cost?
Yes.
Just curiosity, are there also potential legal ramifications? I know when we go to sell property as a public entity, we can't... We have certain legal restrictions. Is that true? Would that be true even in a secondary market of trying to resell as well?
Yeah. I'm not sure how a modular unit would be classified. I think it would be more of a fixed asset than a building. And so I think it would fall under the, like, whenever we have equipment that is in value of excess of $10,000, which this may well be, we have certain requirements that we have to follow in order to dispose of that equipment. So they're probably an auction of some sort.
Well, I agree that I think it would turn out to be more of an albatross than a benefit. Just one question about something you said, Pat, was the, when you mentioned the problem with it takes a while to deconstruct them and get them up, how does that work in the leasing scenario?
Well, and that was one thing we made very clear in our discussions with the lease proposal, is that our lease will go from June to June, and our lease is over, the leasing company takes... Because they have not disassembled them, our lease is still over. Our term is going to be over, then it's up to them to come in and take them apart, take them down.
And they would pay all maintenance costs while, in the interim, to make sure nothing grows as you put it inside the...
Correct. Yeah, once our lease is ended, right?
Then they're theirs.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then they have a limited time to get them off the property. The other thing is, we can't let them have them sit there for six months while they try to resell them unsuccessfully.
So that's included in the contract?
We will include that as part of the language that we include in the order of the contract.
Right. Are we talking about what kind of timeframe that looks like now?
Typically, it's 60 to 90 days. They said, "Give us 90 days." I said, "We need to have them out of there before school starts again." And then they said, "That'd be no problem." They said 30 days is about average, you know, 30 to 45 wouldn't be unusual. Whatever our date is when, you know, we need to have it, you know, school start again, we'll have them out of there before then.
But these are abs... These will absolutely be brand-new units?
Correct. Yes. Yep.
Anything else?
Where does this come in compared to what we have budgeted?
We budgeted $4 million.
$400,000?
So the lease is $3.6 million.
And what contingency is right?
Right. It's about the same.
Is that... Do we think that, I mean, with that $400,000, can we find other uses for that?
Certainly.
Don't even think about it. It's already spent, Charlie.
I would refer you to this document at the top of your back.
Okay. Mr. Gaines?
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Okay. That gets us C finance, permanent appropriations. I'll accept a motion to approve the permanent appropriations for 2014, '15.
So moved. Second.
So let me say a few words about this. Thank you for letting me slip this item in on what's primarily a facilities agenda. One of the reasons that we held on to the appropriations as a point of conversation was we were waiting for the negotiations to finally finish with OPEC 617. They have... You've not yet taken action on those. You will at the October 7th board meeting, but the effects of those negotiations are built into the budget that you see here. So this is the appropriation permanent. You started the year off with a temporary of 25%. This is a permanent appropriation by fund. That's what you approve it at, at the fund level, with a general fund appropriations of $110,753. That is consistent with the five-year forecast that we had. A couple of things I'll mention at this time is really the majority of this budget is the staff. You know, 80% of the budget is salary and benefits for staff people. You know, that's primarily what we are, is people serving children. So that's the bulk of your budget here, along with some other things in terms of purchase services and some other areas, technology and those kinds of things. We will have a kind of a larger conversation on this budget. It's going to be embedded into the five-year forecast along with actual numbers, and we will bring you the five-year forecast in October. You're statutorily required to approve it then. Fortunately, we have our lay finance committee chair in the audience tonight, and I was able to speak with her prior to the meeting, Jane Geneva. And we're going to bring the lay finance committee together in October as well to review the five-year forecast and these appropriations as they appear so that, you know, we are having some conversations about looking at the forecast and millage and those kinds of things for next year. And so we're going to get the lay finance committee together and have some early conversations and try to figure out where we are and what might be recommended to the board down the road. So that's what we have unless there are any questions specifically about that. I mean, there are a couple of funds on here that I think we talked about when we approved the temporary. There's a Fund IV now for building funds, which we've never had before. You will see, I did get a question about Fund 14, Belfair. We still have a little bit of activity there because we still are required to serve the kids in the lock-in units. So we still have staff people going in there. So even though we don't run a school there, we have some costs there, so that's why you see an appropriation amount there, but it's very small compared to what it used to be. Anything else about appropriations that I can answer at this time? As I said, we'll get into some, I think, meaningful conversation around the five-year forecast when you can see it broken down by object, and you can see exactly what's related to staffing and purchase services and all those other areas, and then kind of look at the trends that we have in the history.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Gaines?
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Okay. We were into the work session, and I'll turn it over to the Steves, and we may have covered part of that work session agenda already. So, Steve?
Well, thank you, Mr. Register, and good evening to everyone again. And I'm going to... You may remember that the purpose of tonight's meeting is to focus on the schematic estimate cost of the work. So we'll be hearing from our construction team, the Gilbain-Ozanne folks. And Steve will be doing some introductions, but I would like to... The team keeps growing, and so I'd like to do some introductions. Certainly, at the end of the table is someone who needs no introduction, Dr. Dixon. We're glad to have him on our side of the table. Mr. Zanoni is here again. And Jeff Henderson immediately to my right, and Jeff is with the Gilbain-Ozanne team. And Jeff is chief estimator with them and really worked hard to put the numbers that you're going to see together. Further down is Gary Baylog and John Arcini from the BHSM Architects team. And then in the back, Jim McMillan from Karpinski Engineering, Jim. And we also have Fred Rogers in the red vest, burgundy vest, and Scott Orr. They are both from the Gilbain-Ozanne Design Team. And Scott is going to lead their presentation tonight. So with that, I will turn it over to Steve, who's going to make a couple of introductory comments, and we'll get started.
Okay. Well, thank you. And as Steve said, this is a continuation of our last meeting, and that's why we had it so quickly. It's been two weeks since we last met and you reviewed the schematic design documents. From those documents, an estimate has been developed, and I'm going to kind of walk you through sort of the pieces of how that's developed and what are the issues and challenges and where we're going to go with this. And what I'd like to do, and Jeff, you can go to the next slide, is to first walk you through what was the basis of this estimate. And this is important. I think it's also, I do want to point out, this is part of the process of doing a project with the construction manager at risk. As you're aware, the construction manager is with us well early before they give us our guaranteed maximum price. And so they're advising us, and advising the design team in particular, of where costs are going on the project. And by doing this early, really allows us then to delve deeper and deal with those costs as we come up with them and find out what's important and what's not. In a lot of projects in the past, as you know, you basically design it, and then you go out and bid it, and then all of a sudden you realize we're over budget. And what do we do? And that has unbelievable repercussions, both for schedule and costs. So this is normal of the process. And, you know, I'm going to actually point out, it sometimes in the media has a sense because they don't understand the process, gives the impression that we're over budget, that we're never over budget. What it is, is the estimates are coming in, and we're estimating and we're determining what's best in the project. Nothing as what we're going to talk about today as you go through it, is we're talking about eliminating things. So I want to point that out from the very start. The basis of this cost estimate is first the documents that you saw at the last meeting. Also, there were very detailed narratives of building systems. And what that entails is the engineers wrote a detailed description of the mechanical system, of the structural system, of the plumbing system, of the electrical system. But remember, we're only using narratives. It isn't an actual drawing. These are not construction drawings, and we still have a whole nother design phase to go through. So from that information, the construction manager working with the architect has to develop some assumptions. And those assumptions are still being challenged because we just got in the estimate just very, very recently. And what we mean by it, that there are quantities, that is, you count things, and because they don't have drawings to count, they have to make an assumption of what the count should be, and the type of materials. And I really appreciate the Gilbain-Ozanne team. They take a very conservative approach, and I think they advise us very, very well. They're not letting us go beyond and really challenging us back and challenging the design team. So once they did that, they did the first initial draft estimate that we received from them. Is 4.4% over our budget? And I don't want everyone to say, "Oh, my God, we have a huge problem." We do not. This is a very manageable number, and it's an overage that is not unusual at this stage of the project. 4.4% is very on the low side. It's been our experience, when we get to this point, we're seeing things from 15% to 20%. So, and that I have to really commend the AE team to really, where they've really looked at the project and really tried to explain it well to the Gilbain-Ozanne team. So, but why is there an overage? I think that's a question that I'm sure is on your mind. And what are these challenges? If you recall from the last meeting, the Gilbain team explained about the increase in square footage due to the inefficiency of the building site. And that has a lot to do because we're keeping really a very important piece of history within the community, and we can't move it. And so we always have to work around it. So it did show an increase of square footage, which, believe it or not, is kind of interesting. It's about 5% is the increase. There is another area that we've been advised on also. There has been a change in market conditions, in particular for escalation. When the master plan was originally done, we were looking at escalation in the 3% range. We're now looking at escalation at the 5% range. And so that is being affected. Now, it's not, when you look at your numbers and you'll go through them, and you say, "Well, I don't see the number 5%." That's because it's at the midpoint, and that's how they do that. But we are working with a higher escalation, and I do appreciate Gilbain advising us, Gilbain-Ozanne advising us on that. And also for PMC, our group, as you know, we're involved in a lot of projects in the Cleveland area, and we are seeing that. That's because we have a lot of major projects going on simultaneously. A lot has to do with the Republican Convention coming here. All of a sudden, we're rebuilding Public Square, we're building hotels. And then simultaneously, the big institutions are also in a building boom right now, particularly Cleveland Clinic and also Case Western Reserve. So right around us, all of a sudden, everybody's building and building some pretty substantial projects. And even in light of that, we're still at 4.4%. So that says a lot of how the design team's been working very, very hard. Now, you'll see in their presentation, target savings initiatives. The whole project team sat down together and have identified the areas that they believe, after greater discussion and greater depth of understanding, that these targets can be made. And you'll see that where we think the targets are. Now, when we say target savings, they're talking about not a reduction in the program, that is, the types of spaces that we have in there, not a reduction in the size of the spaces, nor a reduction in quality. What it is, is we need to go through a process to really vet the project estimate into our project budget. And what that'll mean is, if you can go to the next slide, is that process is what we call alignment of the estimate to budget. One is, we have to move to the design development stage so it allows us to dig deeper, allowing the estimate to be based on very specific costs instead of assumptions. We're making a lot of assumptions right now. The other is, one of the things that's a little different, as you see, we have tracked, and you'll see what those are, where the targets are. We need to track that through the design development stage. And what we need to do is also, we need to review that with you as the board at each of the next work sessions. And we're going to have a series of work sessions. I don't think the dates have been established, but through the design development phase, which is over the next three and a half months. The next is also, we need to track the design contingency. If you look at this budget, there is also a 5% design contingency. And why is that? That is not our owner's contingency, which is a separate... If you look at our budgets, it's a separate piece. It sits way out to the side, and nobody gets to touch that. And, but there is within this estimate a design contingency which we need to have because we can't predict because we don't have a full set of drawings. Well, as we get more detail in the design, the more we can reduce that and really have a better understanding. I will say this, the design team has done an excellent job of really trying to keep us ahead of that design contingency, but we're still showing it right now, and we really need to. We will eventually probably identify alternates. I'm not going to lie to you to say, hey, we won't have some alternates, just like we did on, on the stadium project. I think we have two already identified, which are identified in this estimate. One is the two additional lanes going from eight to 10, and the other one is CT space. But it's been my experience that we may have other alternates in this type of project. And why would we have them? Well, we want to be ready, if we get some bid savings, to enhance the project. And as you know, when we went through the stadium, and you quizzed us very hard on this, on the alternates, and I look at Eric, and I appreciate that, saying, gee, you know, you're only going to, originally, we were only going to build 1,000 seats. And as you know, we built 2,500, and we built those into the, into the project, staying within our budget, and that was through the use of alternates. So we were ready. The last item I really want to point out as part of this process is you can't rush it. It would be great today to just say, hey, tell me what we got to do to get rid of that 4.4%. But that would force you into some decisions that you may later on say, why did we do that? And in particular, we really need to vet, as you're aware from the last meeting, some key building systems, in particularly, the analysis on the HVAC central plant, where we're going to take that. The other is a theater and auditorium in this budget. There's some, obviously, some, meets all the needs of that, but again, do we need, we need to vet all of that? And then there's other special building features and special, special wants that we're hearing based on our last meeting. And so we don't want to just, you know, go across the board and say, okay, we're just taking this out, and just send the architects on their way. If we do that, we may lose some real opportunities to really get the things that, that you as a board have commented to us, and as the public has commented to us, what they'd like to see and is important. So we want to do that in design development. We're going to have, and I'm going to go to the recommendation even before we have the presentation, because I, we're going to ask it, which is a week from today, for you to make an approval of the SD estimate. And it would be our recommendation, even at that point, we wouldn't have done all of the vetting we need to do, all of the other pieces, but we would make a recommendation that if you do, if you, if you go ahead and approve the estimate, it would be contingent on the team making the target savings during the design development phase.
Steve, could you say just a little bit more about the target savings?
We are going to have a, your timing is perfect. We're going to ask the construction manager, who's going to walk you through this, and we have a document that you're going to see on the screen, that identifies the areas where, where the target savings need to be.
Sure.
Yes, we'll first start with the estimate, and then we'll go through the target savings. And I don't know if you all recall Scott Orr?
Good evening. So a couple items that are in front of you, I have to make sure some of the audience understands what I'm referencing. We've, you've got a detailed estimate, which is the thicker packet. You've got a summary of that estimate, which is this page, and then we tried to boil up, you know, a shorter version for discussion. A little bit of the process we're going through, and Jeff is obviously a new member here. Jeff is not a one-man show. Jeff's got a team of specialty estimators, some that are dedicated to mechanical, some electrical, some, and some of our interior finishes, skin. So what Jeff does is, you take, we've taken the documents that we received, and really gone through and done a detailed takeoff of where we see the project going. If I step back a little bit, at the POR level, you know, really, we've got some, we've got some diagrams, but there's no definition of really what the systems are, where walls are, you know, what, you know, the level of detail from finishes, it's just not there. So we've, we've taken historical data and done a square foot, you know, a price per square foot for basically each major system. Last time around, it was about a 335,000 square foot building, and from round numbers, we were about $225 a square foot. And that's right in line with what we're seeing from historical data. When we went through this process, obviously, Steve alluded that the building did get bigger. The building did get bigger. But the good news is, when we went through the documents that were provided by the design team, and went through it and completed those takeoffs of what we thought were masonry walls, what we thought were drywall walls, what we thought was going to be carpet, what we thought was going to be, was going to be concrete, and made some assumptions, and then sat down with the team and say, here's what we're thinking. We were able to walk through and say, boy, you've assumed something here. I think when, through the next stage, from ST to DD, that is something of potential that we, that we can talk about. There's a lot of elements here that really are not defined. For instance, you've seen the renderings of the skin. You know, there's a vanilla envelope basically on the back there that could be a lot of different products. So when we went through the estimate, you know, Jeff has done a detailed takeoff of how many square feet of wall we have there, and the discussion with the design team, is this brick? Is this metal panel? You know, we've made some assumptions, how many windows, how much brick is there? And, and we were able to walk through and say, boy, this is an opportunity, this doesn't need to be brick, this is back house, this could be another product. You're carrying, you know, whatever that figure is, there is a potential to change your products there and meet your function. So we've been able to, you know, quantify, you know, avenues through the next design phase where we can save some money. And really went through, we basically went through every single line item here and did that. When it came to interior finishes, we did it with, with different flooring products. When it came to skin, we did it with different exterior products. From a standpoint of mechanical, electrical, really, we had a narrative. We didn't have any drawings telling me where drains are, you know, where lines of ductwork were. So what we did is, we did a detailed takeoff of where we thought that stuff would line up. We knew kind of how, how many pieces of equipment would be, and where bathrooms were going to, were going to end up. So we walked through that detail with the design team, and they said, okay, well, here's some avenues where maybe we can do stuff a little bit different. We talked about light fixtures, you know, what are you expecting, where are you expecting LED, where are you not? So that was the process we went through, to basically find realistic avenues where we can better define the assumptions we've made. So if you walk through basically this sheet right here, that's probably the best summary of those discussions of, when we walked through and said, here's an opportunity to save. There we go. Here's, here's an opportunity in each different division, where we've got, you know, five or six items for each one, where we think there's an opportunity to do something. What's a little deceiving about?
Could I just, just for everyone's, if you look at the blue section, that's where the budget stands today, and that's the budget that approximately 4.4% over. And if you look at, then, it says path to budget on the second column, that's where Scott is going to walk you through those targets, Ron, that you, you mentioned.
So, you know, for a couple examples here, if you look at the first one, side improvements, you know, that's got the football field in it. So that's a little deceiving from this summary, you have to go to the detailed backup to understand that. And with the, with the football field, with the side improvements, and with the savings we're seeing from the football field, come in conclusion, there's, there's absolutely potential to save $150,000. A good chunk of that is just, is the money we're going to give back from the football field finishing up. When you walk to some of these other ones, superstructure, we've made some, we've made some assumptions on what, on what, you know, what the structural seal system's going to be, how many tons we think are going to be there, you know, is it going to be a precast plank system? We've made same sort of assumptions on foundations, and we didn't have detailed, you know, spread footing, so we've, spread footing sizes. We made our own estimate, so the design team has said, that's probably aligned. The next one is exterior enclosure. Certainly, when we walk through some of the different price per square foot, with the quantities we have, it's, there's some real potential to change some products here and there, as we go through that, and save some money there. You know, roofing, certainly, there's a couple options there, what we can do, maybe simplify, simplify certain details, where we have some of that, that, those, the windows up on the roof structure. Interior construction, certainly, this is one that, as we sit down and vet through, what's carpet, what's concrete, what's, what's got ceramic tile on the walls, what doesn't? Where do we have high-impact jipboard? Do we pull that out of all the offices? You know, some of that stuff is avenues where we've taken our assumptions, say, well, this is something that as we provide more detail, we'll be able to dial that back. Couple more here. Equipment, you know, we made some assumptions on, 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 on linter feet of casework, how much we're going to have for labs, kitchen equipment. As we go through and figure out room sizes, those dimensions are going to change, and there's a potential for savings there.
Scott, can you stay on, on this for a minute? So the, all of those examples that you just gave about this choice versus this, are those decisions typically made, or recommendations made by the team during design development? Or, or are, or are those decisions a combination of recommendations and alternates that are also done through design development? I mean, what, how, how will that process come to us? I mean, the example that you gave early on of the exterior, the skin in the back of the building clearly is going to have a huge cost impact on the project.
Yes.
I would imagine, whatever decisions are made. Is that something that's done through the design development phase, and we will be apprised of the recommendations that fit within the budget? Or will you be recommending, we want, we will recommend bidding this as a, this, this nicer finish as an alternate?
That is absolutely the next phase of what we're doing.
Okay.
So when we go through those different, we'll take the skin for example.
Okay.
We'll go through those different products, through the DD phase. We're going to sit with the design team, they're going to sit with user groups and understand what, what, what we like there. And, you know, if we, if we show, for instance, brick on every, on every square foot of surface out there, and we say, boy, there's a potential to have some savings here for metal panels in certain areas, that we could absolutely bid that as an alternate, to see what we can afford and what we can't. We can actually do estimates of that, too. When we finalize the quantity, say, here are your, here are your two, you know, paths to get to a budget. And that is something we'll continue to develop with the team over the next several months.
And I do think it's important to note that in the design, the design development phase, what's coming is, when we talk about the team, we're talking about users, as Scott mentioned. So Gary Baylog and his team will be setting up shortly a whole series of meetings with individuals at the high school, teachers and staff, to really delve into the design of those individual spaces at a much more detailed level than we have right now. And out of that process will come some of these recommendations, and that's what'll drive some of those decisions. Gary and his team will have discussions with users. What kind of a finish do you need here? What kind of a product? What will work to serve your needs? That'll flow up, just as all those decisions have, through the design team, through the cabinet, and ultimately, some of those will undoubtedly, we'll talk about, you know, with, with the board in sessions like these. Not all of them, obviously, there'd be way too many, but a lot of them.
And I'd just like to add that, when we're evaluating all of these, we discuss lead. What impact does that have on lead? What, you know, impact negative or positive? So we certainly vet all of that out. And that example of the exterior skin, I think we also need to look at, you know, certain systems that, where we're going to try to achieve the same look, the same look that everybody would desire, perhaps like, so we can look at, maybe we have a concrete cast concrete panel system, which affects, you know, it's a little bit difficult, but, you know, the, the structure, the panel itself, and everything like that is all kind of intricate when you're evaluating a design. So those are going to be, going to be some of the discussions that we're going to have with the design team to evaluate, to see if we can save money without virtually changing the load.
And that's, again, not to beat a dead horse, but that's the power of the construction manager at risk process, where we have all of the expertise of a Gilbain Building Company at our table to help us look at those kinds of alternatives, to do exactly what Jeff just said, so.
And some of the larger packages, you can see towards the end, HVAC, systems, and electrical, that's the least amount of detail we have right now. So for instance, we've made an assumption on the size of a generator. You know, the design team has not finished their calculations on loads and what's actually needed, but looking at, and say, boy, that's a pretty big generator, there's probably opportunities to downsize and still meet the needs of the loads of the building. So there was a potential there compared to what we were guessing, to save some money there. We'll have to continue to vet through that, through that example. Same thing on the HVAC. We had gone through and assumed so many drains in certain areas, so many linter feet of pipe, where equipment was going to be handled, you know, and where distribution was going to happen. When we sit down and walk through what's actually going to happen, we're going to find some efficiencies there. And the confidence level we have to be able to put those numbers down there was from sitting with the design team and walking through what we've assumed. And really, these assumptions are a little bit beyond what we would normally expect from an SD phase. And you can see that, the next line item, the next two line items, when we talk, you know, Steve alluded to the design contingency. Normally, at the end of SDs, your design contingency is closer to probably, I'm sorry, where you see AE design contingency, 5%. Normally, at the end of SDs, that's really closer to 7% to 8%. You know, it's 10% at POR, probably 7% to 8% at the end of SDs. It's really closer to 3% to 5% at the end of DDs. And then obviously, at the end of the job, it's gone. So, but when we walk through the team and walk through the assumptions we've made and having more detail, we felt confident as a team to be able to reduce that and be able to meet, to meet that expectation. So, and then that's really, you know, when I say we're a little bit beyond what we normally have, in some, some aspects, there's a lot more detail that we were able to, to walk through. Some not. I mean, from the standpoint of structural, not a lot of detail. MEP, not a lot of detail. But some of the other ones, there was. We got great feedback on interior finishes, on the skin, those, we were able to put some, some pretty good numbers to that. Another one I wanted to comment on, you know, some people don't quite understand the escalation factor, really what that is about. You know, when, when we, this job is actually going to start, obviously, next, next summer. When we put these packages out on the street to bid, that's going to be next, basically next March. When we, when we walk through this guaranteed our price, we're going to put these prices out. So we like to escalate to that factor. And then knowing those, those subcontractors, when they bid the job, they are buying materials and labor through the, through the next two years. So they will have an escalation factor in their bids they have to offer. So when we, when we go through and do these estimates, and we look at historical data, we're using, we're, we're bringing those numbers to today's dollars. And this figures to understand where we think the market is going to be when we bid the job in March, and what that, when, what that market is going to be expecting for a two-year job.
Steve, the escal, I'm sorry, Scott, I mean, the escalation rate that you put in here, it takes into account the greater demand in the area that Steve Zanoni pointed out earlier.
Yes, and, and exactly. And when we look at that range, it's in the 5% to 6% range right now from the historical data. We're on, we're on the 5% side, so we're a little more aggressive there. But, you know, some of it has a factor of, of the relationship we have with the subcommunity, knowing that we're, we are a larger player and team with Ozanne. We know that, that when we look at the bids that are coming up, the other projects, we're going to be able to get some of those better numbers from having more of control of the market. So that, that really is a design that, to define that. You know, obviously, the other construction costs, that, that stuff, you know, stuff like insurance, permits, you know, some of those, some of those numbers don't change. Stuff like staffing, that doesn't change. You know, your, your, some of your taxes and your insurance, that goes up and down with the price of the job. So as we find more savings in cost of the work, those numbers go down because they're percentage-based.
Now, this schematic design estimate that we have now is a design estimate with the last schematic design that we looked at.
Correct.
Is that correct?
It's the drawings you saw last week.
Yeah. So, so what we anticipate is that there would not be any more adjustments in terms of the, the design itself, or the location of spaces, or anything like that.
Gary, do you want to maybe talk a little bit about what'll happen next in that regard?
Sure. Is this on?
It is.
Okay. The, the next phase, the, the design development phase is, right now, we have a project that has bones. And so what we're going to do in the next phase is put the, the skin on, and, and the arteries, and the hair on it. We're going to, you know, the next phase is really, I think, this phase was, this phase was a real critical phase because of all of the, the magnitude of input that we were receiving, you know, during, during POR and, and, and into this phase, in order to put the plan together, in order to kind of get the plan to some state of completion. So the next phase, will there be changes? I would say that overall, the, the plan of the building has been, for the most part, I think, accepted and approved, the overall plan. However, each space has not been designed, the interior of each space has not been designed. So that, that's what we're going to do during the next phase. And as Scott said, all of the systems that we're talking about, structural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, technology, lighting, all of those systems will get detailed out. And Steve, can I, can I put up that little slide of the, the little graph?
I don't have it.
Yeah, it's right there.
There it is.
What, what Scott was talking about is that, you know, we have this design contingency. And then the budget throughout the process stays right here. But with the, the design contingency at, at 5%, or at, at SD, it's at 5%. At the POR was higher. The more information they get as we're walking, you know, going through this, the design contingency goes down, and, and gets closer to what our budget number is, to the point at the end of, at CD, and when they produce the guaranteed maximum price, that, that contingency is at zero. What I would like to say is that there are all these, there's these targets that, that we have agreed that we are going to accept, that we're going to move towards. That's not to say that, that we take, we're always going to be taking things out in order to accomplish that. What happens is, is some of that contingency What happens is, is, is some of that contingency is used, as we better define that, that contingency goes down, and now you, instead of having a set of a, some, an assumption on this side, you have something that's real that they're, that they're pricing. So, you know, that, that, that's kind of, and, and as Steve's, as Steve Zanoni said, the advantage is that we're not doing this blindly. If this were just a design bid build, we would be kind of muddling along with our assumptions, you know, our best, you know, our best guess at something, uh, and then, and then be surprised at the end when we go out and bid it. In, in this case, when we hit that GMP, we should be in sync, uh, and there should be no surprises. You, you should know exactly what you're purchasing when you do that. And there will be a, a series of decisions, there's gonna be a lot of decisions. A lot of those decisions are gonna be based on our meetings with staff and, and others to, to, to create the final design. There will be some decisions that, that we will bring back to you as recommendations and as a board, you'll have a choice to make. And, and some of those, uh, also, uh, there's the opportunity where, where something, where we think is maybe undefined in terms of, you know, could there be savings at, at, at bid? You know, some, that's when we look at some of those things as being alternates, because there's always a chance that you get some bid day savings, uh, when you actually put it out, and then you can, you can, uh, purchase as a part of the project additional scope. But, uh, in general, we think that, uh, we're in a really good place. Four percent, a little over four percent at this stage is, I think, somewhat remarkable because we generally don't, we, we usually don't see that. You know, usually it's, it's 10%, and then you're, and then you're trying to really ratchet things back. But at this point, we don't think that, uh, we, we think it's manageable.
Ron.
Go ahead.
One of the, um, I know that there were several significant conversations that we had at the last meeting related to the schematic design, that decisions weren't made around geothermal or hybrid that had a huge cost implication, or the parking issue. Help us understand the timeline for those decisions, or will that be part of the timeline that's shared with us at the next meeting? How, what do you propose for that?
Yeah, absolutely. Those will be, um, we're gonna have to make a lot of those decisions during the design development phase, during the next three-month period that, that Gary has, has talked about. So at the, uh, at the facility's work sessions, um, you know, certainly parking may well be something that, uh, that we have more discussion about at a session like this. Probably the HVAC central plant is something that we may well have some additional discussion at, at another work session. And there may be some other, um, decisions similar to those that we bring to you and, um, you know, we work together to come up with a final selection.
So the larger of those two examples that I gave, the, the HVAC, how was that factored in? Remind me, Scott, how you factored that into this estimate?
Those, those three options, those are still options.
Right.
But we, we have carried the price of, of the, you know, basically the base system in, in our numbers.
The central plant.
Which is the central plant.
Central plant, okay.
But I, I do wanna point out, we are challenging that in terms of looking at, uh, we've had some really good meetings with the engineers, so we've been sort of really working due diligently over, even over the last two weeks. And we're looking at some ways to come up with maybe some alternates that are a little different than what was presented at the last meeting. Right, at the last meeting, it was basically full geothermal, sort of a, a hybrid, hybrid and, and base. And what we're discovering and what, and that's part of the process. It's not a discovering, but we have to look at, are there other ways of, of doing this? Can you have a hybrid that may be less expensively, but still do some of the things that we want it to do? And so we are analyzing that, and that's why I, I meant about, I put the comment, you can't rush, because we, it isn't just those three examples. Maybe there's some other, other option that's out there.
Yeah, I just wanna throw, uh, one thing out there, and I, it's, um, just in the back of my head. I know that, you know, we always had the conversation that this building, we're fitting the building to educational purposes. And so that at the end of the day, we should have a better facility for better educating our kids. And then one of the things that we know is happening is that, that there's been a real change in how we think about PE. Uh, that is, people in activities can get credit for PE. But it seems like we are, uh, I, I, you know, I have no idea how much space we need for PE. But it seems like we're carrying along enough PE space, you know, with aerobic rooms and cardiovascular and this and that and other, to support PE as if we're still gonna have everybody taking the required PE. So, any comment on that?
Would you like to make, um, I think you're asking really good questions, and I think that one of the things that we've, we've recommended and what's happening and is we're getting the, now that we have a, a high school principal on board, uh, he's helping us look at those, those, uh, those pieces. Uh, as I said, we're trying to not manipulate the, change the program. So maybe you, uh, in terms of spaces, so I, I can't answer that, but we've asked the high school principal to really participate with us and, and really, and he's been looking at some of those challenges, just as you described. And there are others, that there are others that we, we, we're starting to hear about. And I think this is all really helpful, because I think you're exactly right. In the end, the building really has to work for the educational model that you're, you're working with. You're in, uh, you're in a transition of changing that model. And, and, in the end, we all said at the very, uh, one of the key elements of this project is that the building is flexible for 10 years from now, uh, you know, 20 years from now. And so these spaces, I think this is where our architects, working with, with them, you know, maybe you start one way at day one, but maybe in, in five years, it's gonna be, it's gonna be operated a little differently. We don't wanna, uh, crowd people into where, why did we make those decisions? And I think by having the high school principal really actively involved is really gonna help us in, in that, in that decision-making.
Scott, did you have anything else?
So, yeah, with that said, we've got Jeff here. Uh, if there's any questions from going through the detail that you wanna talk further, we're open to that. We can certainly open that up and, and, and talk more on some of the assumptions we've made. It's a lot to absorb. You know, we've, we've been through a series of meetings to make sure that, you know, we're on the same page. I guess from my perspective, you know, the building got five percent bigger, um, but, you know, we still have a confidence level to build that for your budget. So I, and, uh, I think with, with the relationship we have with the team and the process we've gone through, I think that's, that's something that's achievable.
I've got, uh, I got a few que, I got a, some big picture questions and some detailed questions. So basically, when we're looking, if I'm looking at the, uh, the general trade of work, the second, uh, budget, second lump, it seems like the, the lion's share of the, um, overage would be in the exterior closure, which would be exterior finish, correct? Is that, exterior closure?
Yeah, yes.
So, so to a degree, the, we could, we could, it, it, it's possible to say that because we're going with a, uh, more ornate exterior than just a blank brick wall, that's what's causing us cost creep.
Yes.
Okay. Which I don't like, but, I don't like it, but I like it at the same time, so. Uh, but we made that commitment to the public, so that's.
And in our detail, we, we've broken down that difference between what we're doing to the front of the building, that restoration versus, you know, the, the targets we have for products in the exterior. A little different way to approach both.
Right, and, and I think that it's, you know, we, we would not back away from the commitments that we've already made with regard to the front of the building without coming to you, I mean, as a board. Um, so, so that's not where that $650,000 is gonna come from.
Well, no, I'm, I'm just saying, from, of the 150,000, the lion's share of this, this component, everything else is relatively small amounts. That's the, that's the big hunk of it. Um, and then the mechanical and electrical work, um, again, over, the lion's share of that is gonna be the HVAC and the electrical. I believe you were saying before that that's because you're still, it's very much in flux as far as.
It's not very well defined.
Okay.
It's, it's just narrative form right now, so we've made a lot of assumptions.
Okay, so the, the theoretically then, the, the goal is that when we get to much more level of detail, we should see that hopefully shrink considerably?
Yeah, and, and part of the process is, is for us to show how we get to the budget. Here's the target. So when we are picking out products, we know, I'll take carpet for example. There's a lot of different variations of qualities of carpet. So we're saying, this is, we've, we've got something, you know, basically a mid-grade carpet. You want more or less, that money's gotta come from somewhere else. So we, we know the design target of the product we have to pick. And that's no different, I don't care if it's carpet, or if it's an exterior skin product, or if it's, you know, a piece of mechanical equipment. That's the target that we've put in here. If we need to, if we feel as a team that we need to spend more money in that item, it's gotta come from somewhere else. And that's part of the, putting those assumptions on paper.
Going slightly into minutia, but also because it's how you're budgeting. Um, and it was a question I was thinking of before. Right now, our, uh, and most of the buildings, except for the 72 wing and science wing, our corridor walls are these big, thick, I don't even know, they're, they're nice, thick, thick solid with a smooth veneer. When we're budgeting out and we have these new corridor walls, what is the structural, is it drywall? Is it cinder block? And then, if it's cinder block, is it finished or is it like the wall behind you? Is it just painted?
We, we actually have a takeoff that we could send you that shows where we assume some masonry blocks and that's, you know, lower levels around gyms, that kind of stuff. We assume drywall and high impact, and probably Gary and Jeff can talk.
Yeah, and, and really in, in sort of broad picture, back in the high base spaces, the gyms, the obviously all the gyms, that, that's gonna be CMU, painted CMU exposed. Um, up in the, towards the front, the classroom, those additions we're putting onto the side of the wings up there, that, those are gonna be more jipboard corridor walls. Now, the, the wall, what we're doing with the existing wall, you know, we're hopeful the exterior wall to kind of keep that, taking those windows out, maybe infilling with a jipboard or, you know, and something you can maybe, they can think of something to play with there.
But basically in, like, yeah, I assume by the, in the lower level and what have you, it's the center, as long as it's, you know, the cinder block, I expect that. But I was wanting to make sure that when we're in the twenties, whatever's in the, the academic component, that we're not gonna, that was one of the things I was surprised when we were touring Beechwood, which, you know, I figured, you know, the land of milk and honey, and their, their corridor walls are just basically dressed up cinder block. And I was like, oh, that was interesting. So that's why, for us, if we're going from something, I, I think there's a degree of an expectation of that.
What, one of the things that, and I think what Steve talked about is that what we're trying to build into the building, too, is, is some future flexibility. So if you put up a, if you put up a, a concrete block wall, it's, it's not coming down anytime soon. So, you know, in things like, large spaces like gymnasiums, which will probably always stayed a gymnasium, et cetera, you know, makes sense to do that. But in the teaching spaces, we think that, um, you know, we, there's, there's what we, what's called a STC rating, which is a, which is a sound transmission class rating. You know, we can achieve, you know, the kind of, of sound separation that we need with a drywall wall. We use a high-impact, uh, uh, drywall, which means that you would, you'd kind of hurt yourself if you tried to damage it. And, and so, but what that, what that does is it allows you in the future, if you want to modify those spaces five or 10 years from now, that you can reconfigure those, a lot simpler than you would if you were, if you were kind of trapped, you know, with a lot of, 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 uh, CMU walls. So we take that into consideration. The other thing is, is in the 1926, you know, drywall is probably more compatible with the look of, of plaster than, than, uh, concrete block, so, you know, we take that into consider, consideration also.
So ideally, we're gonna, in the, ideally, we're gonna have the, the aesthetic that looks comparable to what we currently have, but not having, it's not gonna be a load-bearing masonry wall, so we have far greater flexibility for, uh, much easier rearranging of walls in the future.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, and then I guess my, because I'm always going on about flooring surfaces, um, you've got, uh, polished concrete. Where are you planning on that, again, from a, we're still away from design development, but we're budgeting out on it. Where are you anticipating seeing that in the structure? What, what portions of the building?
We're, we're thinking that circulation certainly would be, would be polished concrete corridors in the new, in the new section. There is some consideration, and, and, you know, this is, you know, I'm not gonna start a controversy, but, you know, we see a lot of, in, we, we see a lot of carpet tile used in these spaces. Airports use this. I mean, it's, you know, carpet tile has come a long way from what it was, you know, uh, five, 10, 15 years ago. So, it, you know, there's some consideration to maybe some of the upper-level circulation areas where you're not tracking in, in, uh, mud and that kind of stuff, that you may, you may use carpet tile, because it does a couple of things. It quiets the building down. Uh, if something does get soiled, you, you, you pop it up and you send it to the car wash and you put it back down, so. But in terms of polished concrete, we think that, uh, you know, there are some, uh, on the first floor, uh, public corridors, uh, certainly in some of the other, uh, spaces like art, you know, where you may splatter stuff on the floor, that kind of stuff, that it certainly makes sense to do that.
Where is, we have it, uh, one of the lines, and I can't because of the light here. It was, it said ceramic tile. Uh, where were you envisioning the ceramic tile? And what's, is that the current corridor floors, or are you talking something different?
Uh, I think this, I think tile floors, we were looking at the current floor, the current 1926 building, but also restrooms, obviously, would need that kind of floor finish, and maybe some of the shower areas and that kind of stuff. Kitchen would need probably a core tile floor.
Okay. I, I think, I sent you some notes. I think you'll, you're, you're very cognizant of where I am on the.
Got your notes.
Okay, so, I'll just, but I would, I, I think in, in the. Adjacencies as much as possible in the, in the traditional 1926 quarter, uh, core of the structure, even with the new construction, uh, I think there, there is a, a desire and expectation that, uh, it's going to have, uh, a, a feel of, of, uh, contiguous, uh, spaces that are adjacent to the, the true core. Uh, I think we're gonna wanna see, uh, much more of, uh, matching, matching materials and finishes. Um, that's why I was trying to, yeah, the, the, the sub-basement level where you got all the gyms, I think nobody is expecting it to look like it's 1926. But if it's right in the main, the main core portions of the building, I think the, the expectation's gonna be that we're gonna, if we're, if we're maintaining this, the superstructure, that we're gonna wanna have some of that, uh, aesthetic as well, so.
Understood.
Thanks. Those are, I think those are basically my questions from going through it. I think, um, if you folks are comfortable, I mean, that, that, at this juncture, this is what the expectation is, just hope, we're, I'm, I'm hopeful that the, uh, the way it's conveyed, uh, in, in media is that we're not over budget. This is the process, and we're gonna get to where we're supposed to be. Um, you know, this is the same way we're having gone back to, we haven't gone back to, to square one, as was reported as well. So I thought that was just a unfortunate headline. It's a polite way to put it. But otherwise, I think the, the level of detail's good, and it's good to see we're on track.
Yeah, I mean, this is kind of an odd question, I suppose, but, and I think this is a, probably Gary and John's question. As, as we're looking at, you know, losing, or, or finding a way to say 650,000 from the, from the exterior closure, is there, uh, are you, based on your previous experience doing this kind of thing, are you confident that we can save, make those kind of savings and still have the back? I mean, obviously, the front of the building's still gonna look fantastic. It's always been planned that way. But will the back half of the building be something that you will be proud to put in your brochures and things like that? Or is that like, we'll put the front?
Back half.
Or is the back gonna be like corrugated cardboard?
No. It's interesting that you should ask that question, because John and I were, John and I were having a discussion on the way up here. We have a lot of discussions on this. This is a fantastic project, and, and we are going to be absolutely thrilled with the result of, of both the existing building and its additions and what goes on, what is, there is no, if you say the back of the building, there is no back of any, of this building. This building has a significant, uh, presence on, on all four sides. So, uh, it's, the, um, it's not an unusual challenge to say, okay, we need to, we need to have, you know, uh, a more cost-effective way of enclosing the building. And, and as Jeff has alluded to, that there are ways to get, uh, a look that is, that And, and as Jeff has alluded to, that there are ways to get a look that is, that is not, I'm going to say it's not faux, it's, it's not something that's fake, but it achieves the same look, but it doesn't cost the same to build it. You build it in a different way rather than a traditional way. So, you save, you save labor and you save some material cost. There are also some opportunities, you know, there, there's a lot of outside of the building that, that unless you are in a helicopter or walking around on the roof, you're not going to see those outside walls. So, does it make sense to make those walls masonry, where you have to carry it with a, you know, steel beam or something? If it doesn't, if you can do it in a way that is, is environmentally prudent in terms of, of the enclosure, in terms of, of the thermal value, et cetera, et cetera, and it's more water-resistant than brick, has less, has a longer, lower life, or a lower maintenance, you know, so, so we're looking at that. We're also, as Jeff said, you know, we have to be cognizant of lead, and they have, and lead requires a significant effort at daylighting. So, you know, the trade-ups are, is, you know, do you make the building in some ways more pleasant for the folks who are inside? Make it more transparent, you know, so, in, in, in the cost of, sometimes the cost of glazing, some systems is, is, is lower than the cost of masonry. So, you, you look at that. So, we think it's going to be a great building. It's, it's got, the possibilities are really, really, and we're just kind of, we're just, we kind of outlined, in, you know, I don't know how John calls it, but we just, we've really kind of created a mass. We've put, they've, they've done a takeoff on skin and some of the fenestration, but we haven't gotten into all the detailing. And once we do that, I like that, the chart that we put up there, you know, the assumptions start to go away, where, and they're actually pricing real, real things. So, we're, we're confident that it's going to be a, a, an architectural jewel.
The other thing that.
To, to, to complement the 1926 building.
The other thing that, that, that will happen in the next three months is that not only will we share materials with Gilbane, Ozan, but we'll share materials with Cleveland Heights, so that you guys can see, you know, exactly what we're talking about, and you could touch them. Right? Because that's a big thing, you know, being able to touch the material that you see that's going on your building. So, you could sense the relationship between what's being done, what was done in 1926 and what's being done in 2014, because, you know, times have changed. And we've already been in contact with some, some, some brick companies to talk about getting samples of brick that match what was built in 1926. So, everything sort of starts from, from that, that, that process.
And I very much appreciate your comment, that there's four major sites to the building.
There's actually five in this building, because there is, there is a large component of the roof that you look down upon.
Not counting the roof.
From a, from a calendar standpoint, I guess, because we've got, maybe Steve's, we have this evening. We're not acting on anything this evening. What's our sequence coming up? We got, we have a meeting next week, or two weeks?
Next week.
What's our sequence of when, when are we making decisions, and when are we deciding on?
Well, actually, Gary and John and I were talking just before the meeting, and, and we're going to be talking in the next day or so, putting together that, that sequence, and we'll share that with the, with the board and everyone shortly here.
Because I think, I think, right now, it's been very much programmatic and square footage is usually what the conversations at the microphone, probably again this evening. I think moving forward, we'll still hear some of that, but I think it's going to be more of, when we get to the designs, there's that potential of, hey, why are you doing this versus that on finishes and things? That's why they get a sense of when we are going to have those.
And keep in mind, a lot of that will be driven by the users, who we're going to be meeting with over the next couple of months. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I guess Steve, what, go ahead.
Yeah, this is the time, if there are no other board questions, this is the time when we would normally allow some audience comments and.
Yes.
I did not do a sign-up sheet.
You didn't have a sign-up sheet?
We did not do a sign-up sheet.
Okay, then, I could take a motion to adjourn then, right? Are there people from the audience who want to speak up? Oh, well, we've got.
You're the first one out to the parking lot if you take a motion to adjourn.
I know, that's right.
We're going to have to, where is Mark? We're probably going to have to make some kind of arrangements for the lady.
For the what?
I know, I'm saying the lady in the wheelchair, she's going to.
Okay. We still need it on the mic.
If it's not now, then I'll be muted.
Yeah, you have two, five minutes.
I'll talk fast.
Okay.
Do I say my name first?
You should.
I'm Jody Taslan.
And let us know you're not from.
I'm from, I'm from Cleveland Heights. I have a question about the modular units. There have been some reports on the news, and these are perhaps older units, where the air is not good, there's not good air exchange, where there are leaks and mildew and mold buildup in them. So, I want to know how healthy these units are going to be for our kids and teachers, because those kind of things impact a person's ability to learn, as well as be healthy.
Yeah, given that there are a lot of hands, what we'll do is, we'll take the questions, and then we will post answers, just as we've done at each of the other meetings. Is that okay?
Sure. Were, were the, were the answers posted from the last meeting yet?
The, the answers from the last meeting were posted. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, look on the board.
Okay.
My name's Chris Warner, and I've been a longtime resident of Cleveland Heights. Both my sons went through the school system. One of my sons now teaches in the school system. And I just recently retired. I'm a psychiatric social worker, and working in the parenting program prior, at Metro, prior to that, I worked at Beechbrook in their school-based. So, I think I could be valuable for the, for the system, for the high schools, and I would like to volunteer at the high school. The one thing that gets that stumbling block for me is parking. And I would like to know if there will be enough handicap parking so that I can get there and I don't have to be there at seven in the morning, you know, so I can catch a spot. That's my question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Kathy Lawrence, and I'm a high school librarian at Cleveland Heights High School. One of the spaces eliminated in the current plan eliminates the library instructional area. It's gone, it seems. There is a bundle of research that demonstrates verifiable positive effects of librarian input and presence on student achievement, most of which has been brought forward in the planning process. My colleague Amy Bloomberg and I have worked diligently with the architects and consultants to advocate for our involvement with student instruction. In particular, the location of the mini auditorium is problematic. There are other areas planned, for example, the media cafe and the district historical archives, that do not have the same research-based impact on student achievement, and should be considered in this downsizing project. I'm happy to make myself available to advocate for adequate high school library space, which will allow us to provide continuing valuable 21st century instruction to students and staff. Thank you.
I'm still living in Cleveland Heights. I would like to have you considering some things that weren't you considering, HVAC system beyond costs. The same data that generated the table and the graph that we saw at the last meeting can easily be converted to carbon footprint that includes both carbon dioxide and methane use. I think we need to look at that for a cost-benefit analysis. There are not only the real impacts of carbon on the environment, but there's also the emotional impact on students who are really despairing at this point in time in what climate change is meaning for their future. And they need to hear that we are taking real steps to slow the process. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joan Spurl, and I live in Cleveland Heights. And I'm going to say a few of, not my own words, but someone else's words. This is from the Cleveland Plain Dealer's report on the sustainable Cleveland Summit that occurred a week or so ago. Well, this is from September 17th. And so, this is from the article. Retired U.S. Marine Corps Colonel Mark Puck Mickleby put sustainability into a global context in a rousing end-of-the-day address in which he declared that sustainability, quote, "is not a green movement, but a strategy," unquote. Mickleby is a co-founder of a new laboratory at Case Western Reserve University, whose mission is to use sustainability to develop a grand strategy, like the American strategies that defeated the Axis powers in World War II and outcompeted the Soviet Union during the long Cold War. "In both cases, it was the nation's economic engine, its productive capability, that was the key to victory," he said. "Today, the enemy is global depletion of resources," he said. "A rising middle class in developing countries that will accelerate depletion, an ailing U.S. economy that is actually a contained depression, and a foreign policy that has lacked an overall strategy for decades." What is our national cause today? Right now, we are the backer of the status quo, making sure we keep what we got. That is the problem, he said. We have not been able to come to grips. What is the next great challenge? The challenge is global unsustainability. We've got to deal with it at home first, then on the global stage. We are the only ones to have that ability to make the shift. Sustainability has to become our national imperative. So, I would suggest that with decisions you make, you're sending messages, you're making a statement to our students about where you want their future to go, which direction you want it to take, what priorities are, you're making decisions about, and you're making statements with priorities. Think about passage. That's the, a big motto in this district. Think long-term. When the Sustainability Working Group put in those thousands of unpaid hours, it was for this reason, and, and it was for the benefit of the students way down the line. And I thank them for all their work. I'm a member of it, but I did not do those thousands of hours of work. I did a little bit, as you know, but, so, that's that. And then, I just wondered if there's, this is per Eric's and Nancy's questions, sort of about like, the next steps. And I wondered if, if there are plans to have more community forums. I know you're going to be meeting with the users, but like, if, it might be nice to have a, one of those bigger meetings again, to explain the, the decision process thus far, and, you know, how it's moving forward. And just, you're, the thinking that's being, how, how decisions are being made, what decisions are being made, how they're being weighed, all that stuff. So, that's it for now. Thank you.
Tonight, a couple of weeks ago, or a couple sessions ago, a person did a process, some discussion of process. I think there's a real process challenge going on. You're making a momentous decision right now. You're affecting thousands of kids' lives over the lifetime of this project. You are potentially putting at risk, or not putting at risk, a community that's under economic duress. And I think you got to, you got to take that with a very serious thing. So, I think you've got to add some discipline to your evaluation process. Put on my NASA project management hat, which I didn't wear that often. But you had a decision tree. That decision tree took and collected all of the requirements, desiriments that have been generated. You've got, you know, the LFC plan to begin with, you've got the working groups, you've got the Eco Charette, you've got probably other sources that I'm not thinking of. Document all of those inputs, all of those requests. They can be simple phrases that describe what they are. And now, you trace them. You show a traceability path from there to now, and it'd be clear what's, what the decision process is. And I, as somebody who's watched this process and been as close to the inside as you can get, short of being an FAC member or a board member or something, I cannot explain to your customers, to your constituency, what is on the table and what is off the table, and why it came and why it went. And that is going to kill this community if you don't provide that kind of justification to a choice where, where 27% of the eligible voters put the community out on a financial limb to afford this. You've really got to put something into that.
Hello, my name's Steve Warner. I live in Cleveland Heights. Also, that was my mother that spoke earlier, and I had to really underscore what she said. I would like her to volunteer in my classroom this year. She just retired. The only reason she's not is, we don't have enough parking. And it's really disturbing. I'm trying to find a way to get her into the building in the middle of the day. It's not possible right now. The two things I've thought a lot of since last week that made me want to come up here, and I try not to speak too much at these meetings at all. One, last week, Mario from the FAC talked about solar. I was very impressed with his comments, and it made me realize that that needs to be planned right now, or not planned at all. If it does get done, one thing that I think should be considered is a dashboard that Oberlin College developed. It's software that is real-time monitoring of how much electricity is produced. I know in the classroom, it would be very interesting to use that type of monitoring. Second one is parking, and I'll make this real quick. There are two things that, that really kept me up for a while, that I thought about, about parking. One, personally, I walk to work. I enjoy walking to work. I do see how it'd be a, very difficult for teachers who bring stuff every day to get from the parking lot to the building. I watch people from their cars every day. It's not every day, but when you do have stuff, it's very difficult to get into the building. If you don't have parking on-site, you have to come up a way for teachers to easily get stuff into the building. Also, I really wonder about safety with events after hours. If you have droves of people going from a football game or a concert, going across the road, I could see it being difficult. If there is not a parking lot, I would challenge you guys to think about outdoor learning in the space where the baseball field is, a learning garden, some kind of outdoor experience that we could take kids to right after, or right during school, instead of a baseball field. If there is parking, I would encourage you to think about using the baseball field instead of softball field. It's closer to the main door, it's closer to the historic door, as well as, a lot of our sports use Forest Hills, Kane Park. There are four ball, hardball diamonds that are very nice at Kane Park, or at Forest Hills. There are four diamonds at Forest Hills. I don't know of any other softball diamonds in the city. It seems like it makes sense, if you are going to build a parking lot, to build it where the baseball field is.
Sam Bell, a Cleveland Heights resident. There is a certain amount of kerfuffle surrounding the issue of teacher parking after the current Heights High renovations are completed. The current situation provides more or less convenient on-site parking for all or most of the staff, unfortunately not for all of the visitors, and especially not enough for Mrs. Warner and others who need special parking. Various iterations of the schematic design appear to offer less on-site parking. The city of Cleveland Heights points out a number of factors which lead it to recommend strongly against the construction of a large parking lot at the high school, per Richard Wong, the city planning director. Among these are urban heat island effects. We all know that large parking lots raise air temperatures in the immediate vicinity by 20 degrees or more on a hot day. This increases air conditioning costs and makes life less, less pleasant for the surrounding area. There are stormwater management difficulties, paved areas result. Paved areas result in more runoff, as you know. There's a loss of green space. Green areas, even of lawn grasses, at least help maintain more stable local air temperatures. Accordingly, the city has offered to allow staff parking at no charge in the Cedar Lee Lot. This includes the option of using the parking garage. So while the walk between the school and the lot is somewhat longer, using the indoor parking virtually eliminates the need to scrape your windshield on the winter months, and that's a task which might well take far longer than the walk. It should be noted also that increased walking results in numerous health benefits which potentially could reduce your health costs. I don't know. A new onsite parking lot, per Mr. Shigalis, would consume approximately $400,000 to $600,000 of this project's budget, and it would require ongoing maintenance, repair, and eventual replacement during the next 50 years. So to piggyback on some of the previous questions, if a staff parking lot is perhaps not the best possible use of either of the corners of the site for which it has been proposed, what is the best use? Perhaps, as the girls' softball team says, they should be allowed to retain the ballfield that was recently installed on the northeast corner, with the boys' baseball team keeping theirs on the southeast corner. Both teams point out that they undertook substantial fundraising campaigns to pay for field improvements. Alternatively, this board might decide to erect teaching greenhouses, learning gardens, or a park course facility, which is a type of recreational obstacle course. Or perhaps the naditorium, which has requirements for a separate HVAC system, should be relocated to one of these corners, along with adequate parking for community users. I don't know, and I don't pretend to know the answer, but I do think it's important that you really consider what is the best use of each piece of outdoor space. Currently, your athletic department has you literally buy the balls, one form or another, one shape or another. Thank you.
I'm a resident, graduate, and a parent. And I heard a brief mention of career tech. It's so important to our district and I hope that throughout the process, the relationship that we have with Tri-C can help guide those trends and really help formulate what that space looks like, not just what we need today, but what are the trends in northeast Ohio and how that really can be utilized to best serve our kids.
CTE is one of my bugaboos. I'm concerned about the lack of classroom space available for three programs in the basement that are expected to share. A classroom that will become an athlete's study room at 3:00 and therefore, even if three programs could share that space during the same periods of the school day, nothing could carry over to the next day because a different group of people would be coming in to use the space after hours. I'm also very concerned about the drama classroom becoming a, you know, eight-foot-six, nine-foot-tall space, classroom instead of a high base space of some sort, because without height, that classroom cannot be used as a lighting lab or a sound lab or any sort of effective technical theater teaching space. It becomes a classroom. And that's great for actors, but it's useless for technicians and designers. You need to be able to learn about scale and geometry and the inverse square law and all the things that are involved in sound and light, and you need 12 or 14 feet of ceiling space in order to be able to teach that. And there's another classroom that is shared amongst the marketing and business programs. Again, same problem. The CTE classes happen at the same time of day, and if they're sharing a classroom, then somebody's got to figure out the scheduling. And that's a nightmare that's not for the architects and the designers, but for the administrators and teachers to figure out. And we need to be providing space that makes it easier for the teachers to teach, not harder for the teachers to teach. Thank you.
Anybody else? Steve?
That's it. That concludes our presentation.
Okay. Then in that case, I'll accept a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gainer, would you call the role?
Mr. Cobble? Yes. Mr. Bevler?
Yes.
Mr. Reddest?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?